Able to come to the knowledge of the truth. Epignosis, it's that word that means clear and exact knowledge. A knowledge that exerts a powerful influence on the knower. A knowledge that indicates the thorough participation of the knower with the object of knowledge. They're not gonna lead us sillyly away to some stupidity. Well, back to this section in Are You Limiting God? Unless we know the name of Jesus Christ is a vital, vital means essential to the continuance of anything. It's crucial. Living, it's in active and operative use, see? Energetic. Teeming with life, living, reality. Something that is genuine, that's solid, that's sure, that's certified, that's guaranteed in our lives. We are most definitely limiting God. Boy, you know, I think about that. Sometimes we remind people to pray and use the name of Jesus Christ as a crisis and afterthought. You know, to them. That's not it. It needs to be a vital. If your prayer is two words, the other two should be Jesus Christ. Hey God, in the name of Jesus Christ, you know.
Jesus Christ would be at least two words.
Right. Otherwise, we are most definitely... Are we possibly limiting God? No. We are most definitely limiting God. How do you like that? Unless we know the name, we gotta know it. And of course, we've built this power of this name and the tremendous aspect of that name. And all that's going on in that name. As a vital living reality, otherwise, we are most definitely limiting God. The Spirit of God is born within us the very moment we accept and believe on the Lord Jesus Christ. There's that name again. And that God raised Him, Him who? Jesus Christ from the dead. This is a supernatural miracle of God. We have nothing to do with this new birth except to allow it to take place in our lives. That starts right there, establishing a precedent. We had nothing to do with it. So the precedent is to be thankful for what God did through His Son, Jesus Christ. That's the beginning of it. We're thankful for Jesus Christ and we're thankful to God. God is the miracle worker. God's the one. He is the one. See, this miracle of all miracles, God's the miracle worker. Now, when we operate the man in the space of the Spirit, one of them is workings of miracles. Who's doing the work then? You are. Who's within you energizing that power though? Working within? God is. He works within, but you work it out. You work without. Not without God, but within, without? He is the one who creates... See, you couldn't have done anything about it. You don't create nothing. He is the one who creates a new spirit within us. But having God in Christ in us, do we now have creative ability? You bet we do, because we have God in Christ in us. You know, think that through. One day. The natural man has no creative ability because he does not have the Creator. But you have the Creator in Christ in you. You have the Creator in the created Word in you. You have some creative ability within. But He is the one who creates a new spirit within us and makes us His what? He did it. So if He did it, huh, then He did it. I didn't do what He did. From then on, we are God's children. Well, if He did it, we would be God's children from then on. We belong to the family of God. Okay, well, if we're His children, we would belong to His family. We are children of God. Sons of God. And joint heirs with Christ Jesus. We're heirs of God, but we're joint heirs with Christ Jesus. Ooh, would you like that? Hey! That means we're joint heirs with the name. Remember that name, the vital living reality name? Jesus Christ? Here it's called Christ Jesus because we're joint heirs in the inheritance that we received since He is the Exalted One. So we are joint heirs with that name, with Christ Jesus. There's that name. We are joint heirs. We share fully with that name. Well, what does the name have? All we'd ever need, all we'd ever want. And we share fully with that name. The name here, Christ Jesus. We are joint heirs with Christ Jesus. Oh, the love that drew salvation's plan. Oh, the grace that brought it down to man. Oh, the mighty gulf that God did span at Calvary. Then we are no longer servants who know not what their master is about to do. We are sons, but we are sons, sons of God. Yes, we're servants in our relationship to our fellow man. You know, serving God by serving our fellow man. But our relationship to God is sonship. We're servants of God from the perspective of serving others. Who know not what their master's about to do. That's why the expression, "God works in mysterious ways," that would apply to Old Testament folks perhaps. But not to sons. We know what our master is about to do. We're sons. Like in the family where Dad says, "Okay, hey, we're all gonna go on vacation." And he helps you plan, and he shares things and all this kind of stuff. We know what our master's about to do. We're sons. Well, if you don't, if we don't, then we're thinking servant mentality. Why not think son's mentality? If you ask your dad stuff, wouldn't he tell you? But you ask an employee, the boss might, or employee asks, the boss might not tell him. Doesn't want him to know yet. Doesn't want him thinking this or thinking that. He couldn't tell his servants the mystery. He even held the mystery from his only begotten son, see? Because it wasn't time even for him to know. It's really something. I don't know everything, but I know this. We're sons of God. Satan then has no further legal rights over us. His power, his legal rights have been ended. The power for him to influence the census world has not been eliminated. He has not been destroyed yet, but he's been paralyzed for affecting us unless we allow... Well, we'll read it. "No further legal rights over us unless we permit Him to usurp, to take by force or by treachery." To usurp, it has even a longer definition than that. "To usurp authority which He does not rightfully possess." In our case, He can't take by force, right? Because He doesn't have that power over us. But He can take by treachery. By trickery. If we get tricked by the adversary and start thinking negative... Gosh, you know, it's so simple. As soon as we think a negative. Mrs. Werro has made this statement that I wrote in my Bible. Oh, must have been 20 years ago. Did I write it in my Bible? I don't see it in my Bible. Must have written it in my advanced class syllabus, yes. She said, "The first negative thought entertained is a step back." And I made a comment after that. Stepping back is for losers. That was my response to that down. Comment by her. Yeah, it must be in my advanced class syllabus. "The first negative thought entertained is a step back." Mrs. Victor Paul Werro. Stepping back is for losers. Garland me here. "To usurp authority," and we have to permit that. We have to permit it. We issue Him a permit. We give Him that power. Well, we don't wanna give Him that power. But as soon as we entertain a negative, we are giving Him that power. "To usurp authority which He does not rightfully legally possess." We may limit God in our lives by not knowing what is legally ours as sons of God by Christ Jesus. So if we don't know what's legally ours, that's why I read to you before in one of these chapters or books or something, all those tremendous rights, the right to perfect health, to happiness, all those things we have. You know, these are rights in addition to our major sonship rights. We have the right to eternal life. We have the right to a new body at the return of Christ. We have a right to a home in heaven. We have a right to perfect love. We have a right to peace. We have a right to even to joy. We even, he states in the Green Book, Dr. Werro, "We have a right to happiness." You know, you don't always think about that. But you have a right to have pleasant circumstances where you can believe for that to come to pass. It's not that you have to go through one day of drudgery after the other. But sometimes the things that the world says will make you happy are not the things that God supports. But there's plenty of stuff. Boy, you know, besides the joy of the Word, I'm happy about things that I read in God's Word that it says about me. Blessed is the nation, remember? Happy is the nation whose God is the Lord. Blessed is the man who walketh not in the counsel of the ungodly. That word, blessed, is happy. The blessed man smiles. Why? Because he's happy. So happiness is one of your rights as a son of God. Where'd I write these down? I had them for you. I'll read them off again. These are many that I've garnered from various books. This is on page 47 of your foundational class syllabus. "He gave back to the born-again believer the legal rights lost in Adam and more." Well, what did Adam have? Perfect love, see? Complete joy? Happiness? Perfect health? And more? Eternal life? Here's the more. Victory over sin and the consequences of sin? A home in heaven? You can write these down sometime, if this is going too fast. The name of Jesus Christ in prayer to get results? The Father's protection? The Father's care? The Father's guidance? To be sons of God? Children of God? Friends of God? Heirs of God? Joint heirs with Christ? Gift of Holy Spirit? To be changed at the second coming? An immortal body? An inheritance in the new heaven and earth? When Christ died on Calvary, He was our complete substitute for sin and the consequences of sin. Well, what are those consequences? Some of the things we just read, the opposite. Unhappy. Unpeaceful. Poor. Sick. Confused. Distressed. Perplexed, well... It's not perplexed, perplexed, perplexed necessarily, but all the negatives. If you're perplexed to the point of confusion, see? That would be negative. All the negatives. Those are the consequences of missing the mark. Sin. That's sin nature and the consequences of having a sin nature. But when Christ died on Calvary, He was our complete substitute. Nothing was left undone in His substitution for us. See, this whole thing of sin and the consequences of sin needs to be clearly understood. If you break fellowship, that produces consequences. Like when the Apostle Paul went to what? Jerusalem. But Jesus Christ paid the price for sin, the sin nature and the consequences of sin, having that sin nature. So that you are not required then to stay in that state of unrenewed mind, to just sit there and have to deal with the consequences. So what do you do? You work your way out. That's working out your own wholeness. You work your way out. You blew it. You made a mistake. You screwed up. That put you in negative consequences. God is not, you're not required to have any condemnation. Why? There is therefore now no what. So you don't have any condemnation about it. You're not required to go through, oh, you know, gee, I should feel bad, I should be condemned. Those things are not required. You're not required to be unhappy, unjoyful, unpeaceful. But you set up these physical consequences. You're still a super conqueror, even in the middle of that. But what does that mean you've gotta do? You've gotta work with your mind according to what the Word says about you and then work through the situation, believing yourself up and out of the soup that you jumped into. Sometimes you can get out of the soup very quickly. Other times, not. You think the Apostle Paul was as good of a believer as you are? As good of a believer as you are? You think the Apostle Paul was as committed to the Word as you are? You think the Apostle Paul perhaps knew as much of the Word as you do? Yet when he went to Jerusalem, he had to work it out. He blew it. He got grabbed. He got beaten. Almost murdered. His freedom was limited from that point forward, his freedom to move around, to move about the cabin. You know, he had to, the fastened seatbelt light was on for a period of time there. He was stuck. But he had to, now he could have just said, "Well, I really screwed this up, you know, I guess whatever happens, happens. I guess I'll just have to deal with it." No. When he got out of that broken fellowship, which is a lot more quickly than I heard somebody teaching, talking about him still being in broken fellowship. Boy, the guy would have been dead if he'd stayed in broken fellowship past the time he recognized he blew it. They would have killed him. He had to believe to stay alive. You don't believe to stay alive in broken fellowship. So it wasn't that he was in broken fellowship for all this whole period of time. I mean... See? But what did he have to do? He had to work out his own wholeness. He saved. You understand how this thing works? You know, you're born again of God's Spirit. You have wholeness spiritually. Well, this is the same kind of stuff we've been talking about now. You're righteous. You're justified, sanctified, redeemed. Sin and the consequences of sin are handled. Now you do something stupid. You know? And you end up with a consequence in your physical life. You don't have to deal with that from the sense that you have the guilt and the condemnation and the bad feelings and all that. But now you got the situation to deal with. So what do you do? Well, you gotta lock in on, hey, I'm righteous, I'm sanctified, I'm redeemed. This consequence doesn't indicate anything about me. So then you just work your way out according to the principles of God's Word until you're free of that situation. That's how this thing fits with the whole rest of the Word. You understand? Understand over there? I had trouble with this for years because I'd go, "Man, well, that means, you know, send the consequences of sin. That means, you know, whatever." And then you'd go, "Well, wait a minute. Someone has sex out of wedlock. And they're pregnant." You know, and now they, they know that as a believer, that if they have the baby, that believer's protected. So they may choose to keep it, they may choose not to keep it. Either way, there will be an effect, a consequence to that physical body of that woman. There's a consequence to the man who did the, you know, who was involved in that. There may be things to work through. In this case, if the woman chooses to have the baby, then the man has a consequence that he may have to deal with for the rest of his life. Does that mean now that he should condemn himself for the rest of his life? No. Does that mean now that he has to, you know, that he, there's so many things that it doesn't, that are not tied in. But the world wants to tie you in and shove it in your face from a mistake standpoint, from a negative standpoint, from a condemnation standpoint? Like the women now that have all these kids? Well, hey, you did whatever you did to get, we know what you did to have a kid. Everybody knows that, that knows anything about having a kid. We know what you did to have the kid, but now how does that have to affect your life? Does that mean you're not gonna have a great, wonderful, terrific, powerful life? Heck, no. You don't have to look at that in terms of, "Well, this will now keep me from really having a more than abundant life. Enjoying my life." Baloney. But you have to work it out now. Now you've gotta work out your own wholeness. You gotta work it out anyway. Why? Because we're screwing up all the time. We, you know, it's mercy and grace again. What, does that particular sin, is that worse than some other sin? Heck, no. But it may be worse in terms of what you have to work out, the amount of time spent to work through the result of what you produced, the consequence of what was produced. Understand? "Nothing was left undone in His substitution for us." I think about this as Jesus Christ being, I stand in double. Boy, I just love this. Where, you know, you get to be on the set. And you're the star, let's say, in this particular movie. Well, when it's time for, now nowadays, a lot of stars are doing their own stunts. But when it's time for you to fall off the horse and get drugged behind it because you get shot by the bad guy or something, or shot at or thrown off, and your foot's still caught in the stirrup and you're drugged behind the horse or whatever it is. The star doesn't do that, they bring in a stand-in. Well, Jesus Christ was like this, like our stand-in double. He stepped in and took our place. He took the fall for us. He took that sin and consequences of sin. He did it. That's why we never have to be negative, no matter what happens. We never have to be defeated. We are never defeated. We are super conquerors, no matter what's going on, when we refuse to compromise on God's Word. We are super conquerors. When we begin to see this truth and we accept the work Christ accomplished, it's finished. When we accept the work Christ accomplished as a finished reality, we become spirit-filled men and women who are well pleasing in God's sight. How do you like that? When we accept the work Christ accomplished as a finished reality. When we get spirit-filled, when we confess with our mouth the Lord Jesus and believe in our hearts that God raised Him from the dead. Then we, as we accept what Christ accomplished in our day-by-day walk, we are well pleasing in God's sight. See, God loves us. I forget this usage. There's a usage like when a father is proud of his child as compared to when the fatherly pride of just having the child. There's a difference, and I forget this usage here in the Word. There's one usage where he's just pleased with us because we're kids. There's another usage where he would say to us, "Well done." See the difference? My good and faithful, like that, "Well done, my good and faithful servant." Where he, it's that pat on the back for doing a good job kind of thing. Two different things. See, we're, and again, I don't remember which is which, but there is an aspect where he's just pleased with us because of his workmanship. He's satisfied with his workmanship. We have Holy Spirit. We have His own nature born within. That's one aspect. Now, in our walk, we are well pleasing unto Him. When we accept what He did, it's not well pleasing to God to work out our own salvation in the sense that we think we gotta work to be saved. Eternal life, meaning. It's not pleasing where we work for our own righteousness. Meaning that we think we gotta work to make ourselves righteous or to justify ourselves or to redeem ourselves or to sanctify ourselves. There's the difference between salvation that's by grace and the wholeness in your life that's by applying the principles of God's Word and working it out. Two different things. But when we try to work out what was given to us by God, there's the problem. We start working, we start trying to do God's work. Here's the deal. We don't do what God says He did and God doesn't do what He tells us to do. You understand it? The church today, to one degree or the other, most Christians are trying to do God's job and make God do their job. In the extreme, they say, "Well, when you really get saved, God takes away this desire. God takes away that desire." God, boy, God just took away the desire for smoking and drinking and hanging out with wild women. You're a liar. God never did anything like it. That's not God's job. God takes care of the eternal side. God takes care of the spirit side. God takes care of spiritually all the rights we have, the faith of Jesus Christ side. He takes care of making us heirs of His, joint heirs with Christ. He takes care of all the spiritual foundation of our lives is taken care of by God. But what we build of our lives in our walk, in our day-by-day living, in our demonstrating ourselves, showing forth ourselves as living sons of God, is based on our work. Boy, when you start thinking this thing through, you know what happens? You start to say things like, instead of, "Well, you know, God will take care of that." We say things like, "I'm gonna take care of that." Understanding this, you gotta be very sharp in this understanding. God takes care of what He said He would take care of. He's given us His power. God in Christ where? In you. God in Christ where? In you. See, people in the world, picking on Jerry Spence again, who say they are God, which he basically says in this book, and he tries to make everyone else to say they're God to cover the fact that he wants to be his own God and think he's God. But because of that attitude, that powerful attitude, yes, it's a lie. Yes, what he believes is a lie. A lie that will be greatly exposed someday unless he makes a change. If it's possible for him to change, which I'm not so sure it is. So you know what I mean? Those of you that know what I mean, know what I mean. Because he has that attitude, that he has all this power to win, he wins. You cannot have an attitude that you could possibly lose in a criminal case and win it unless the other person just completely, unless it's a complete fluke and you're not gonna build a record of winning on a fluke or on a situation where you just happen to be a little more positive than the other guy. You've gotta believe you can win every time. You've gotta believe you can hit the bullseye every time. Well, if a natural man, or worse, believes that and has won every criminal case, what can we believe who actually have God in Christ in us? We should believe that we'd never lose. We cannot accept statements like, "Well, you can't win them all." If he had accepted that statement, would he have won? If he had accepted that statement, would he have won every criminal case? Now, the world throws this out all the time. Who is it targeted at? Believers. Why? Because Satan is perfectly fine when his people win. Why? Ha! So that the believer can look like a moron and his people that don't name the name of Jesus Christ, don't talk about their need for God, all this kind of stuff, so that his people look great. And he tells the Christian, "Well, you can't win them all." And the Christian is the one who can, and is supposed to win them all. It's the Christian who is a super what?
Conqueror.
It's the Christian who has conquered the world. Boy, every, look at how even in minute detail, these little attitudes we have and things we allow our minds to say are negative. And if they're negative, every negative thought entertained is a step back. That doesn't sound like a negative thought. Well, you can't win them all. See, that doesn't sound like a negative thought, does it? It sounds like a logical thought. Because we look around and we see that, well, nobody wins them all. There are people in the world that are not even doggone Christians who win them all. How could a Christian ever say, "You can't win them all?" How do we ever allow our minds to think negative? It's just stupid. It's because we've allowed the adversary to train us. Why? Because you look around the world and these, the endless suggestions of the adversary just keep coming. And so somewhere we go, "Well, we can't, it looks like we can't win this one." No, we can win them all. We must win them all. Well, that's not accurate. We can win them all. We should win them all. That's accurate. Boy. I gotta go back to that paragraph. Everyone, this, this book is so thick with word in every sentence that it's taken years of working the Word to have enough words to grasp the statements here. Obviously, the Word is greater, but he's worked the Word and capsulized, crystallized certain concepts in just one statement. When Christ, when Christ died. When was that? Approximately 2,000 years ago. When that happened on Calvary, He was our complete substitute. He took our place as a substitute. But we are involved there because He took our place. He stood in for us so that we wouldn't lose our jobs. See, He took our shift, and it was the graveyard. It was the sepulcher shift. Anyway, you changed that impression. He took the sepulcher shift. We should have took it and never gotten up, but because He took it and God raised Him from the dead, boy, then we got to take His place, and we take His place now on the earth. He took ours. We now take His. He was our complete substitute for sin. So where is sin now as far as our, the sin nature goes? It's no longer a sin problem. It's the sinner problem to accept it, to just go when it comes to sin, "Forget about it. Forget about it." Forget about it. And the consequences. Boy, every negative thing you would allow yourself to think you deserve, you don't deserve. Not one. That's why every negative thought entertained is a step back. Because every time we entertain a negative thought, we are saying, "God, you just didn't do enough in Christ Jesus." We're saying, "Now, Jesus, you should have stayed in the grave a little longer. You didn't die hard enough. You need to try it again, and this time get it right." That's what we're saying. Boy, our attitude should be so much in the other direction that we are arrogant in the right sense. But hell, we haven't been arrogant hardly in any sense. So to be arrogant in the quote-unquote wrong sense is better than we've been before. We oughta, you know, doctors taught us so many, what would, so many times, what would our attitude be if we were the kids, if we were the children even of the governor of the state of Florida? What would our attitude be if we were the children of the President of the United States? What would our attitude be even if we were the kids of Wayne Hisinga? Oh, whoa. You know, I'm a Hisinga. We walk into a meeting, you know, we expect the meeting to stop or start when we get there and not before. You know, we go into a place, we expect this, we expect that, we expect this. And that should be our attitude, except the, just the difference is where we tweak that attitude is we expect everything we need to be just right so that we can move the Word. Not so that we just have privilege. We have privilege that we didn't work for, that we didn't earn, that we did not deserve. We only deserve it now because He made us worthy. We deserve it now because of His grace and mercy, but we do deserve it. We deserve every good and perfect gift that comes from God because we are His children and we are His heirs. And if we're heirs, then everything the Father has is ours. And it becomes ours in practice as we confess that. As we know the Word, remember, confess the Word and act upon the Word. That is what is known as the synchronized life. We be, we experience it. We experience it. It's ours, baby, and we experience it. So we can hoard stuff? Hell, no. We don't care about stuff. Our kingdom is not of this world. This is not our country. We're ambassadors at large. I think that was the one, or was it extraordinaire?
Extraordinaire.
We're ambassadors extraordinaire. We're, we're just, this world is not our home. We're just passing through. But as we pass through, we are supposed to have everything we possibly need to move God's Word, to accomplish the purposes of God. Would He, would God Almighty not do that for us? It's been us. Right? It's been us. It has never been God. I wonder if we could put this on tape or off tape? I guess I'll put it on. I have a 2000 BMW right now to drive and utilize. It's a tremendous blessing. It's just like showroom, off the showroom floor. Gorgeous, hardly a scratch. Hardly a scratch. It wouldn't have happened just from driving it off the showroom floor. It's a tremendous blessing. It was provided for me by God, by way of someone that you at least expect God to provide through. It's something I've been teaching for years about how even the, because we have rights as the Son of God, if there is only one ice cream stand out in the middle of the desert run by the devil himself, and I went up to it, he'd have to give me an ice cream if I needed it because I'm a son of God, and it's my right to have the best and what I need. If it's, if the only vendor is the devil himself, he'd have to sell it because I'm a son of God. I'll show you that later in this chapter. But what got him to agree to do the deal, because at first he rejected the idea of making this BMW available as an advance on commission to be paid for out of the money we raise with the company. Here was the tipping point or the turning point for this individual to do the deal. I said to him, "Hey, the red car I've given to my wife, and I have another car, but you want me in the best car possible to represent, you know, the company and to raise money for the company, don't you?" He says, that was the, that was the turning point. That was the selling point for this individual. He says, "Huh. Yeah, you need to be in the best car possible." You know, now the other car was wonderful, great ride, all that stuff. But if I'm going to someone's office to ask them to write a check for $50,000, $100,000, for example, I wanna be, look the best, et cetera, every aspect of the presentation. I might put them in the car, drive them around, right? Understand? Different purposes for vehicles. The other vehicle I had, had before I gave away was a Lincoln, a town car. Wonderful riding car, nice car, but not at the level I would need for what I needed to accomplish, and that was the point. Now, what about our God Almighty? Would He not provide for us everything we need to represent Him when a natural man who doesn't have the understanding of God that we have, who doesn't have the great love of God, who is not the Creator of the heavens and earth, when a natural man would provide something that he has available? Would not our God provide every single thing that we could possibly think of that would help us move His Word and represent Him? Would not our God do greater than a human being? Would He not do everything within His power? We have just not allowed Him to do everything He wants to do so that we are the very best for Him. We haven't allowed it. Would He want us to have any physical ailment?
No, it doesn't.
Then we have just not made up our minds to not, to allow Him to do for us and not allow ourselves to keep any physical ailment. Oh, boy, I just know this stuff is right. Sin and the consequences of sin? I know that there are different types of healing, restoration, et cetera, et cetera. But there's healing. Sickness is a consequence of sin, the sin nature primarily, because there was no sickness before sin. Nothing was left undone in His substitution for us. When we begin, when we begin, when we begin, when we begin to see this, begin, just beginning, to see that, when we begin to see this truth, you see it? Begin, begin. When we just begin to see this truth, that there is not one negative that you should, you and I should have. We don't deserve one single negative thing in our lives. Not one. We don't deserve it. Even when we do something that produces a negative consequence, that negative consequence, we do not deserve. Did the Spirit of God do the bad thing? It cannot, for it is perfect. Now, which is the most important part of you? That part that's temporary or that part that's eternal? Well, God needs the whole back package, but this part's gonna drop off someday. He's gonna have to give you a new package. That's why the Word says, now let's just keep it in perspective here in first or second Timothy, first Timothy this time. Chapter four, verse seven. "But refuse profane and old wives' fables." Those are ancient, the old wives' fables are ancient Greek myths.